Translation. Why is this so different than any other one? Thank you.
Okay, we are on the record, Mr. Chairman.
On your legal.
I go free.
And according to the Open Public Meetings Act, please note the following. All Burnersville Borough Planning Board meetings will be held in person in the meeting hall on the second floor of the Burnersville Municipal Building at 166 Member Road. Meetings will be livestreamed on YouTube with no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to offer comments or ask questions will be required to attend meetings in person. The YouTube livestream address for all meetings is youtube@burnersvilleborough/teams. This link will also be available on the agenda for each meeting, which is posted on the Borough website, burnersvilleborough.org. And on the Borough, all public bulletin board use forty-eight hours prior to meetings. Notice of these changes is also an email to the Burnersville News and the Third. I posted a copy on the Borough website and buy a file and copy with the municipal clerk of January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. Is the intention of the board not to continue any matter past eleven P M. at any regular or special meeting of the board unless motions passed by members in person to extend to a later specified cutoff time? And same shall be announced at the opening of each meeting. In addition, the boards is not intended to begin a new hearing after ten P M. nor begin testimony of a new witness after September ten. Any hearing conducted by the board is a fuzzy judicial proceeding. Any questions the Congress must be limited to issues that are irrelevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. The form appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll.
Chairman, Mr. Demarco?
Correct.
Ms. Gallagher?
Present.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Mr. Sasso?
Here.
Mr. Simons?
Here.
Mr. Walden?
Here.
And Mr. Zatovina?
Here.
You have a form, Mr. Chairman?
All right. Waiting minutes? Any, any comments, questions? That haven't already been communicated?
Motion to adjourn?
All set. All in favor?
Yeah.
An eye? Any opposed? None, and no extensions. Okay.
Is that for both sets?
Yes.
Okay.
Can't be done since it's all the same divisions.
Okay, so communications and New Jersey Department. Environmental Protection, application of replacement of the Somerset County Bridge. On Lloyd Grove. Over Indiana Grove, correct? Okay. Nothing on that round, Bob, right?
No, I guess the hearing works for a while.
Yeah. I'm on games for them. All right, uh, is there anyone here, uh, that needs to talk to us about anything that's not related to the agenda? See none? Uh, old business, none, although, um, I did want to approach the topic of the recreation. Planning. Uh, that we've got remembers and so forth. And, um, there may be some stuff that we need to prepare. I know, uh, John's not here, but, um, the case is very large, recreation plan document has been prepared. We don't have a source for it as far as I know. And, um, I'm staying where I want to be sure everyone on this board has had a chance to look at it, and it is substantial. Of course, it would hear, you know, what the places are. Um, and then, uh, we will have to have, I think, two public meetings, um, uh, to review it, and we do have to decide if we want to, um, um, ask the, uh, author to present. And there came an issue in terms of the author about whether it could be remote or whether they have to travel here from Virginia or someplace like that, so kind of have to go through that as well, so.
As long as we can handle it technologically.
Yeah, of course. So we have to take, you know, we have to decide if we want the person to present. Um, you'll get a fresh sense by reading it, or you think, oh, my gosh, there's stuff there early that has to be explained. Or not. And, um, so fresh out of sun will be good. And, uh, we have to figure out how to get the information to the board members. I know, like, I can have a copy of this. And I would guess the office has a copy of it.
It's on the website as well.
Oh, and so you scan the whole thing in?
No, that was done before I was even here.
Okay.
So it's digitally available, isn't it?
Excellent.
So on the Borough website?
Hmm.
Okay. Just, just.
Under the Recreation Department.
Yeah. Public public relief perhaps, related issues, just context, but certainly we can have as many hearings as we want, as necessary procedurally, it's one public hearing for the adoption of the element, of course, but leave that with script. Not enough for, not enough for that, um, and, uh, also just want to remind the board of a particular statute that has particular deadlines being June thirtieth. Um, so I anticipate soon we'll be seeing a housing element fair share plan for adoption by the board, which also is one public hearing. Even, um, but again, that's, uh, that is statutorily required to be accomplished by November then, June thirty.
Okay, which is imminent, so, um, so we have to get cracking on it. And of course, the plan, the recreation plan is old enough now where things have changed. Stuff has happened, you know, properties have either been acquired or no longer available or whatever, and so part of this to handle if there's any delta to it, to, um, kind of deal with that as well.
The housing and fair share plan, of course, would take more priority and urgency if it's one or the other, but it's not to say that the board can't handle both in the end in this period of time.
Right, and also the housing and bishop plan, a lot of that's coming to us, right? I mean, that's not us deciding a lot of things, it's sort of concurring with what the council's plan.
I'd say that's an accurate kind of reason. The board will, yeah, the board will decide.
We're accomplices, but we're not the.
It has, it has very important implications that are being thought through and processed, certainly.
Okay.
We want to be very, it's one of those important, important implications.
And timing is important, you don't want to default and, you know, you don't want to make any issues like that as well, so. Um, anyway, um, so I encourage you, anyone who hasn't, then, um, go, um, get, go look at it soon, because it's a lot to get.
Yeah, it just, it just moves back to the, uh.
All right, so double check and then just maybe, maybe send a note out to everybody to say it's working, it's there, it is. Um, if you look, browse through it, get started on it, browse through it if you want us to print some additional copies, then we can decide. About the. But it is, it is. Okay, I, I just wanted to merge the topic. First. Gave, gave a chance to get his words in on there. Fair share. Okay, um, so new business, uh, the new business we have the bills.
Uh, I would pay bills, uh, per lane sixteen thousand three hundred eighteen dollars, seventy-five cents.
Well, um, oh, six. You got a second.
Mr. Demarco?
Yes.
Ms. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Sato?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mr. Walden?
Yeah.
And Mr. Zatovina?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, so, um, the kind of one order of business we have is, is this, um, the normal business is, um, the, uh, application, including site plan review, uh, installing floodgates. Uh, two sets of stairs, this is for Burners.
Yeah, correct. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Craig Genetti, the law firm, Dave Pitney. I'm going to have the applicant, uh, Mine Brook, two thousand and six LLC. Uh, this is an application for site plan waiver. Um, previously, the application was submitted for zoning permits to install these floodgates, uh, which was denied. And we apply for a site plan waiver, uh. Understandably, these gates are kind of, I never heard of them or even realized they existed, I think, much prior to it. Um, and I lay a background of the property familiar to the Burners in, you know, I see where their steps go down to the Bernie and the one kitchen, and there's no one storage in the back. Um, property owner, we have a representative from Hampshire Companies, uh, who is the controlling entity of Mine Brook, two thousand and six LLC, so as an architect and a contractor, in case there's more questions as to specifics of how it operates. Um, but in general, they've owned the property for almost half twenty years over that period of time. Uh, that, that basin area has flooded approximately six to seven times, and so this was actually a recommendation from insurance company, um, suggesting these type of floodgates, I guess they deal with it before, so they, uh, had the contractor meet the, uh, vendor, and then this is what they kind of came up with, so just to give you a little more clue points to how they operate, I can have our architect, uh, Chuck Miller come up and just give a brief description and obviously answer any questions the board or professionals have of specifically floodgates.
Before this, and Chair, I may, basically, here I can swear in all the witnesses and detective witnesses right now, so we don't forget if everyone will raise your right hand whether you will or may. Uh, and as to brightly as well, we'll all be toured about our firm with the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, not the truth. Thank you all.
Hi, um, so my name is Charles Mallett, I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, have it over thirty years. Um, and so with Craig.
And I'm sorry, your license remains a good standing?
It, it is.
And, uh, have you testified that the next curtain has been accepted by any land use boards, uh, as an act of the field of architecture?
Yes.
And this one by any chance ever?
No.
Okay. Uh, the, uh, Mr. Chairman, do you?
I'm accepting.
You're accepted.
No.
Please proceed. Thank you for testing them.
Thank you, like Craig said, um, what we're looking to do is install two uh, floodgates, one at the larger stair at the corner there, and then one, the smaller one at the kitchen stair. They are not, uh, electronically controlled, they don't need, um, to be raised manually or be closed manually. Um, they are activated by water, by flooding, you know, once water gets ankle deep, a little deeper, they start to float up and then, you know, into an up position, you can see on that drawing, um, the cross section where they're in the, you know, the, the open position, and they're approximately two feet high. And will go across the stair, you know, whether it's the larger stair or the smaller stair. And, um, you know, it's just, it's, it's for, for heavy, heavy flooding, you know, it's not a typical, you know, rain or anything like that. So, uh, if you have any questions?
I guess there's a, um, drain shown on the, uh, plans. How did that function in relation to this operation?
Yeah, so the drain that is behind the, the gate itself, um, initially, it'll take in water. And then once the gate is opened, then it's just, you know, residual water that may come through. Um, but that's, that's the purpose of that, yeah, it, it takes initially, and then the gates, um, it, it kind of acts as though it, it's like a pontoon with hinges. So it just kind of floats up like that.
Where, where does the drain drain to?
The drains are tied, are, are tied into the adjacent catch bases, you know, street.
If it's flooding and the stairs going down, wouldn't water start coming up through there? Is, uh, the, the street below the stairs?
No, 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 the street is, no, the street is at the top of the stairs.
I think the right answer is yes, water, this could end up, you could have backwash coming up, which is not a problem.
Is there a backflow preventer?
Do you have a backflow preventer in that place?
No.
So it's, it's, all right, it, it should not be a problem, it's, it normally would drain, and when the water subsides, it'll drain through that as well, but in the midst of a flood, chances are the, the storm sewers are all backed up as well, and they're part of the problem, and it's not a problem for the design, it's just it's not going to be draining water, potentially not draining water, when, if there's, if there's a foot and a half of water up against this, you're, you're not going to be draining water into that storm sewer, because most likely the storm sewers overflow as well.
My, my, my understanding was that the, I'm sorry, I thought that the pipe actually was acting as the mechanism now, and then.
No.
Where that, there's kind of this, you know, pressure, the water pushes it up, and there's almost like a spring.
Exactly.
That comes completely up.
So it's sitting there flat, right, and you're walking, right, right? Normally? And, uh, when the water starts filling that spot, it just lifts this essentially like a life preserver or flow.
Exactly.
It lifts it, you got the straps to retain it, so it doesn't flop all the way over.
Yeah.
And, um, hmm, okay.
I mean, could be a certain type a massive flood event where it's not going to matter regardless, but, I mean, there's, that'd be problems all over.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna have twenty-four inches.
Yeah.
So what happens if people are inside dining and suddenly, or people are inside and they have to climb over this?
There are two other exits.
The internal stairs.
Oh, I'm trying about the internal stairs, I'm so busy getting the outside. Okay.
He serves in one form.
But why is the play elevated?
That I don't know.
I'm sorry, I can hear you.
But, but, yeah, that tire, that'll only inundate during a hundred year storm.
But how deep?
Well, at least with the center line of based on the pattern, even that. This will be the line falls the building along, what you're going for.
The latest flood plain guide, strongly, right?
Three feet higher. So there'd be three feet of water in the road in a hundred year storm. It'll be the latest. So the drain doesn't, the drain will.
The drain's on.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, what'll happen is the water will run behind, will if there's three.
Without a backflow preventer.
Yeah, without a backflow preventer.
Can you just say something real quick? Some, what did you, we get it from?
Um, and, uh, sure, with the chair permission, we just need your name and address.
William Stratus. And, uh, S T, R A. Z as in zebra, E as in David, A as in apple, S as in salmon.
Great, you're back correct.
Or not back, backwards. Okay, and I'm sure your, uh, address, this is just fine for the records. Three twenty-four. Tumble Road. Asbury, New Jersey. And is this the contractor? And, uh, okay. Please, uh, proceed. I just think to make a little confusion with the drain. From my understanding, speaking from to the company that manufactured it, that drain is only for residual water, it's going to make it by, when the gate is up in the up position, that drain is behind it. Correct?
Yeah.
And it's not really going to do much. In other words, if water gets over the gate or over the walls, that gate, I mean, I'm sorry, that.
That's not the way this works. That's not the way the work, it works, the, the drain is on the wet side, not on the dry side.
No, it is on, it is on, it's on the dry side. It's on the dry side.
I'm looking at the drain here, on the wet side. That's the wet side.
Let me see again.
On the wet side.
Well, when you say the dry side of the wet side, when it's up, it's meant to be the dry side, you know?
Just, you know, you just start more simple.
The gate system is at the top of the landing or bottom?
Top.
Okay, so it's that street then?
Yes.
This, follow me, we're ready. All right, so that extra two feet protection that this gate divides would be two feet over the street, but.
Yes.
Okay. Not the bottom land.
Correct.
And then the drain is on the backside of it.
Yes, it's on the dry side.
Okay.
No, it's not.
Well, it says drain routed to wet side.
No.
Any blood is going to go in down the stairs.
Go back to the question, right, so if it's on the drive and it's tied to the street drain.
Yes.
The water in the street drain is going to go through and bypass this.
Yes.
And come out inside onto the dry side.
Correct.
That is the concern the way you're describing the design.
I.
It just will go under it and escape.
Well, my concern is you're describing something that's not on the drawing. Take a look at the drawing, you have a look at it? This, it's drawing, right?
Eleven by seventeen.
Okay, okay. So if you look at this drawing, you can see the yellow one, you can see this one, it's very clear, the dry side is the side that doesn't have the straps, it's the side that has the straps is the wet side.
Water flows in this one.
And the drain is on the wet side, which is all great, that's fine. It's just that's how it works. There, there's not a pipe on the dry side.
Maybe, maybe one where both of your witnesses want to see what is being explained. They're saying it's just, not that I'm discussing lawyers or the chair or the board.
Or arguments that were playing, something is not predicted, so.
Let's, uh, you know, we can get this order, having public hearing at the moment. So we're kind of, they're going to figure it out on their end, Derek, we're going to hear them.
Why don't you go up to the plan and, and, Carol?
So a little much.
Actually, it, it is.
Great.
That was, this is done.
So our thing is that water flows from right to left, and it's drawing that pushes up the gate from right to left?
Yeah.
No, it's just, same way, we're coming, or you mix, or you feel like it's mislied it.
Yeah.
Well, I think this is functional, and I think the way you're expecting that it is, it won't work.
Yeah.
Okay, you think that it's been, that the water's coming that way? It won't, you'll get flooded.
What you brought, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to.
Just to return to hearing to somebody, we're trying to say that one.
It's not the same.
So.
I'm happy with the drawing. Yeah, the drawing looks good, and I'm happy with it.
Right. But I'm unhappy that we don't seem to know how it works.
Same, you don't want to go back with.
That, all right. That's the concern, is that there's confusion among the applicant as to how this actually functions.
Pretty good.
And.
Go on our website.
And, and in fact, if it is as the applicant says, not that the document, the applicant says, then I have real issues, as this mentioned, by the people on the board, that it's not going to work. That there will be flooding.
That I would. Or rain.
Exactly. If they say, once again, this is the drawing, which is probably invalid, it's invalid. But this says it's tying into the sewer, into the stair, to the storm sewer. Which it can't, if it's on the dry side, it can't.
Unless you put a backstop, saying.
Unless you put in, you know, a jack, a jack rail.
Tied to the existing storm with, with the design.
Imagine, everything is flooded there. There's one foot of water in the street, okay? The storm sewers are completely full. There's no, they're actually ejecting water onto the street. If you got a pipe connected to the storm sewer, it's going to push water into your.
So, right.
I should put a check back.
Unless you have a check.
We put it in this one. What? What are we putting?
Well, you put it in this one, which is fine. You follow the plans?
Yeah, so there's no drain on the dry side. No, the drain is down to that side.
And.
But it's one of the. Yeah, this is the something, there, something came up with this. It's just sort of a normal sample came up with it, you know, it's still here, right, because they have. Yeah, because the data, you know, that, that didn't feel river, sometimes, there. And I have another question, the survey doesn't show the right of it. Okay. Sorry? The survey in the lower left-hand corner of the plan assume is is not the picture right? It's just a curve. It was always a curve on the right of way?
No, no, that's all showing, right, it's a curve.
Well, but it's just a mean and bad, so I don't know.
Yeah, you need to see a larger drawing to see if it increases.
I think you guys are going back to.
I think they're going back.
The
If, if we're not able to tie into the existing storm drain, though, what, how, how will we? How do we do this?
Knowing that you can't tie in, what the concern is that you by tying in and not preventing water from backflowing back into the property, you are essentially defeating the purpose of this, of this system.
But with a backflow preventer, does it work? Or, or are we too inundated with, with water at that point?
It, it can basically either work the way that is labeled on the drawing with the drain on the wet side. If the drain is on the dry side, then it needs a, a back, backflow preventer.
Yeah.
And it won't drain, of course, but during the flood, it won't drain.
But it won't work, then it.
During the flood, you know, there are the drains. Because that's really a residual thing, it's like, when the flood goes away, I want to be sure that this cavity has not got any water in it. Right?
I believe the way you understand it to work in the way shown on the plans
Mm-hmm.
is the correct way.
Right.
Um, so.
You should license. An engineer or architect is really good.
Yeah, uh, as the board engineer can confirm on their website that shows how it works, it, so we have label on the west side. It is obviously towards the street. This is all by way of. Yes, yeah. Um, so water's coming in that way.
Mm-hmm.
And then. And then.
It lifts.
It lifts it up.
Right.
So, correct, the drain would be on the wet side.
Correct. Now, you have to look, you have to. Without understanding. You have to actually look at your steps. You know, which go down, I kind of have to position this appropriately, knowing what you just said and what we agreed. And. And you get into the question of the, uh, right away and the, how was sent.
I'm sorry, I missed a question.
Well, this thing is at the top of the stairs.
Right.
This is at the street, well, street level. And.
Well, yes.
It's like a giant first step. In a sense, right, at street level, or, you know, like a rubber grate that you have at the. At various places and, and it's, the, the grate's gonna pop up, you know, away from precision, it's gonna pop towards. Towards, uh, the end. Of the bar, and. But you have to look. So, but you're keeping, I think, your stairs, are you adjusting?
No, there's stairs, new stairs.
There are new stairs, okay. So as long as it fits, the door will last to be placed in the side. For. Yeah. It is what it is, but, you know.
Well, well, no, I'd like to add something, that we are moving the stairs towards the end so that we're not in the sidewalk.
Right.
So you're redoing, as part of this, you're also redoing stairs?
Yes, because there's, there's a lot of, you know, that.
And.
Steps, there's a lot of room to work.
And you will do within the existing. Footprint of where the stairs are normally around?
Oh, yeah, closer to the building, actually.
Okay, so actually a small. It's all set and done.
Yes.
But do you, do you maintain handicap access along the sidewalk?
Yes, we, we do not approach into the sidewalk.
So currently, there's, say, a twelve-inch wall that goes down to the stairs, it's got a handrail on top.
Yes.
So, I'm assuming that the stair, the gate would start somewhere at that point? And then you have a two-foot. Uh, structure wall.
Yes.
The size of the gate.
Yes.
So that will replace that for your intersection. So that'll wind up being, let's say, a two-foot wall, concrete, and then the gate will be in between those two walls.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we got it. Yeah. You guys want? What, did you want to spell?
No, it's only. Do you have any? As long as we have, you're seeing the length, then that's.
Right.
Don't you check valve if it's on the wet side, as you said? There's, um. The water perp will probably push the. You know, pushing. Um.
And are there drains at the bottom of the steps, man?
There are existing, there's an existing front drain. Today, the word is that.
With. How tall?
No.
Only where that are. Just a little terrace in the bottom of the stair.
Are you anticipating for insurance purposes that this will avoid excessive flooding damage? That, that's their recommendation?
Yeah, it, it's not gonna solve all problems, but it's gonna solve.
It's gonna have to have a very effective something in your basement. That your, your drains are gonna have to run to and. You know, it doesn't. Doesn't help like a levee, you know, if you've got this protected and everything else is. There's a window on windy or something that the water's gonna blow into, so I mean, you gotta, you're building a basin essentially. Protected, so you're gonna need to make sure it's sealed to the two-foot level, and you're gonna need to make sure the basement, you know, your below grade stuff is relatively sealed. And, and you won't be able to seal it completely, so you're gonna need. Um, essentially, a, a some, you know, some kind of pump that would pump it out, up over two feet. I would think. You have to figure out some way to get the water out. Of your base.
But it still looks like you're. Oh, under your flood. You're still, uh.
Not gonna do it.
Not, yeah, no.
Time for the fifty and the twenty. That's what it comes back.
Just run the moat there and have a drucker in the.
Yeah.
So. It. Yeah, so let's go back on track, you had some test of view. Did you?
I think we.
Well. Did we, did someone regard with the brighter means before?
So, Mr., what we, we committed to my plan and since his report, I think the original set of plans showed the, uh. Come on, you have home park managers show. The gate at the bottom of the stair.
Maybe, uh, the applicant there, Mr. Brightly, someone tell me if everything's covered or not, and I'll go through here. And the board as well, not just me, February fourth, fourth of May.
Uh, yeah, we, we provide. Location addresses multiple of the concerns, um, they, they. Depending on how they connect this in, I think they will need. P O T approval to tie into their storm drain. Earl approval to tie across. We can be waiting. The event that's shown in the plan is actually on the opposite side. Of the street. You already have to go across the street, so there's a very broad open term into that. But created. But. I don't have that included, but. Uh, the end that they're showing connecting to the stair one, known about a foot and a half. We just forgot about tying in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or. Or you could just run a little pump in there that, uh. The aquarium pump or something, you know, it's just pumping out residual water after a flood, why not?
Because the gate is probably went more tight, more resistant.
No, it's, uh, that's. The water is, the water is gonna be below the gate, it's all standard, cool. I mean, why even have a pipe, why not just have an ejector?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, no. If you have to sell it, go around all the pump and pump it out for the. With the water. Do. The boat.
Pumping to the street.
We, after flood, no. Like, if it's like, well, I don't have. If there was no pump there, if there was no, I'm sorry, if there was no pipe there. Unless it's by totally, it's gotta be, if there is no pipe there. After flood, you just gotta take a sailboat village pump and you just go. And you get all the water out and you're done.
Pumped in the little.
Yeah, with a little fry engine, just, just stick it inside that compartment, because that's the issue, you gotta empty, you wanna empty the compartment, you don't wanna have it be. Now. That would be after flood, I suspect that just normal rain is gonna run into this compartment. That would be the design, you know, normal rainwater would run in, and you wanna have that rainwater going someplace, so I would. Take back my comment, you basically. Do wanna drain, but it's.
If the drain is probably sized so that.
It should just go to the street.
Limits the water, so that's what pushes up the.
Right, that's one.
Well, do they have to go into the storm water system, or can they just go into the?
It looks like it's the. I mean, the curve is not very high down, out here. Right. It can't. Where.
Okay, do you go in here, how long? They probably can make these strong drains. He's that. But that's okay, I was just trying to think of something.
Yeah, I think, I think that's.
Times. I wanted to. The thought of. The.
Alright, when you're, you need to do. Well, we'll be a P to get it.
Part three.
That's a block.
Okay. Okay. You need to think about a plan B.
More. About. Plan B is. Run on that nature, it's not raining, sorry. For the.
It doesn't work. Yes.
Yes. Yeah, my, yes.
So I just. Perpetual manufacturer. Okay? Wet side when the gate is up, so there it is.
Right, so the point is, you may want to do further expla. Oration as to where that drain is going to hook into.
Right.
That cost factor would be, and where you're gonna have to put it to determine whether or not this actually makes sense. To actually go down that time. Because where you think you wanna hook into, you may not be able.
Okay, so. Years ago, let's say ten years ago. The burners in. Right on their side of the street.
Mm-hmm.
Cut. A liter drain. Into the catch basin system that runs right along there, they didn't have, there's a catch basin. Literally right where we're talking about.
Right.
Front set of stairs on the corner of Wendy and. The main street. And. It's right there on that same side.
Yeah.
And they actually cut a liter drain into it years ago. And I remember them doing it, so I did.
No, there's precedent, they're saying, you know, that.
But when you, when you down.
You don't know if they have a permit for that.
I'm gonna say they did, because it's right in the center of town, I would think they got a permit, I have no idea, I didn't do it, so I'm not. It's really worth it, right in the center of the city, they did. Twenty, thirty feet of it, it's pretty long. And they had closed the street, go work in the street, I'm pretty sure they got one. But again, I didn't do it, so I don't know. But you can see that.
It is. The way it's described. We're okay with it, we're just trying to help you out, and just say, look, be careful, maybe there's another way you can get the water drained out. It's not just after a flood that you wanna drain the residuals out, but the rain's gonna seep into the wet side anyway. It's most likely, because some of that will be exposed to rainwater.
Mm-hmm.
And just think if there is another way to get the water out of it, that's the moment.
Uh, if.
If the other, if it's too hard to get.
Right, if it's too hard.
To throw, and, you know, whatever.
Build, build.
Another way.
It's followed, I mean, every several years, but, um. Maybe if there's approval, we can have maybe. Um, um, maybe do a, some sort of, if we have some other means. Uh. Of draining that water, you know, if these subject involves.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this one should, I don't know, really fun. The borough's fault. The industry, but that's probably what they should go to on this, um.
Is the what, the borough's fault?
There's a, there's a floodplain administrator, I don't, I don't know, engineer. We're not far from there, they should know what they're saying anyway. I don't think it's gonna be a problem if we have to. Or are they tying a park, they're opening Wendy or tying that. They need to put up in far, in far. And that's.
Yeah.
That's gonna be reused by the borough engineer. And. Either way, that's for the second stair, right, for sure, coming across. And the, the beat of sass, it's tied to the roof liner, you know.
It's literally. On purpose here, and it's right at the ground, right there, it's a.
Okay. It's a second. The one. Do you? They, do we have, you know, pure rule on, you have the drain.
It's on there, I mean.
We've got approval plans.
Yeah.
You know, from the site, we don't, it doesn't have to be perfectly engineered, that's for them. They're not. And that's why. That, that's one that. Mm-hmm. If they were, they'd say, well, this shouldn't be. The other sentence. It's not for perjury. It's on your, it's a. Per. It's, it's, they gotta build a work.
Well, that's. Mm-hmm. In the corner, this is, we spend notes, which is. The letter. Well, you can see they've got some with paper on this side. They took this near the back of the lawn. And they were back at the street, my face. They, they can't make them up here, here, this corner. The other side, we have the T C C right here. Other many doors, I know there's one on the corner, I don't know. The side. Yeah, there's one right there, you literally right over in the ass. Can I? Right on the door, do this one, that is, free? This is right there.
So in the end, I think we look for, for type, maybe. Cool, for what's shown on the plans.
Hmm.
Can we really apply the condition of remaining technical conditions of, uh, Mr. Brother's view letter? Um, including any other outside review. I don't even know. And, and the same. Just clarify that. We're seeing some confusion, is there a floodplain manager for borough in here?
Yeah.
Done.
Hey, borough engineer. Get the cool environment.
With that.
Hmm. Joe.
Oh.
I picked up, we have a northeast last name, White, White.
White, oh.
Exactly.
Oh, wait. Yeah, I didn't know we had here.
It's just, just.
Can we make the tiny part around here then?
Well, I don't know if we heard.
And, uh, that's. To the law, right?
Hmm.
Yeah, I guess the way we were looking for his. What? Just review?
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I mean, well, yeah. If you need a roll opening permit, even if you're on the sidewalk, you need a roll opening permit. That's due to borough.
Mm-hmm, right.
So.
And, and we.
So it's all regardless.
Yeah, I, I don't. We pass a contingent on you getting all the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Building things that you have to get, you know, and, and, and any field adjustments that have to be made, so. We pass a contingent on you getting all the, building things that you have to get, you know, and, and any field adjustments that have to be made, so. It's, we, we just, we like launch it, that's.
And it's the last.
Success. Yeah. And still, and busy putting together.
Just for clarification, if I managed, Chairman, uh, Mr., uh, and then you can ask over to the public questions and comments, but.
All right.
The, the, uh, uh, the particular stat, ordinance provisions. The particular statutes, it's too long, I'm not far to say that much, uh, particular, uh, ordinance. Uh, provision that you're proceeding under the site plan waiver is nine day four, for our general, uh, we have exemptions under. A nine day four point one and waiver under nine day four point two, maybe be better to just put on the record, uh, specific provision. They're seeking minor site plan approval, they're seeking exemption, they're seeking waiver, and if so. Tell us where, under nine day four, nine day four point one, nine day four point two, four point two being where.
I believe it's four point two being where.
And, well, the yellow mark facility, is that the V?
I don't know any words that come in, I don't know what that is. Yeah, B two. If there's normal maintenance replacements such as new roof painting, deciding similar activity.
The civil activity to include the flood. Gates?
Flood gates, yes, and stairs, and replacement to stair.
And, and being the plan award, may wave the requirements of this chapter with the proposed development. To involve normal maintenance replacements such as new wood painting, new siding, or external activity.
Good.
I think we can over up the public questions and comments.
Okay, if there are any, if there are any questions from the public here, you know, so no, no questions, and, um. Also then no comments either, and then you can summarize.
I think we're talking enough about the gates tonight. We were just.
Is it a short, is it a quick?
Yeah, we're seeking site plan waiver in accordance to the ordinance under B two for routine maintenance replacement, repair, similar activity. Uh, with the steps and, uh, the installation of these decades. And subject to all that, uh, range of the conditions, uh, as they're stated in the, uh, bottom of the review letter. Inside the fall outside, you seek approval, including any necessary road opening permit, not doing this how.
It's listed over.
One, 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 one.
Correct.
One comment, and that is, I'm not, the color, what, what's the surface color gonna be, the normal position? Like, is it, I mean, I guess, we don't, you want it to look.
Well, it's just gray.
Gray.
Or more gray right now.
Mm-hmm. All right, not orange, no.
No. I think that's where Truman Williams, he conversion to that particular gray, as they call it, just gray.
Or fifty.
It's a selling, it's a marketing thing.
It actually called, uh, it's seven oh seven five wet gray.
One picture, it's drawn yellow and, you know, that's okay, the top side is a, a middle inch.
Like the person doesn't impinge on any handicap access, ADA, it's that's.
Ooh, and sorry, did it note on the plans?
Well, there's no dimensions from the, from the edge of this contraction to the curb line. Yeah, people, I mean, if there is.
So you wanna maintain it, and you grew it along the sidewalk, yeah.
But he did testify, if I'm not mistaken, that they were, um.
Yeah, he just wants to.
Uh, just confirmed.
I wanted, because it doesn't show on.
This has to be confirmed, that, or, in the closed position, there has to be the clearance for the.
So would that be the depiction or another on the plan, or what could be?
Well, you can, you can post it on the plans.
Add it to one of your notes.
You meant like notes on our.
Oh, oh, yeah.
No, I think, like, there's a blow up for stairway number one and stairway number two.
Listen to pitch.
I mean, you just added the mention.
Maybe they get downstairs number two today, I'm sure it can.
But they're extending their stair, not perpendicular to the road, but, but the parallel.
Mm-hmm.
They might be infringing all upstairs.
I don't think they're extending, I think they're starting from where the existing was and reaching the stairs.
Key is maybe.
There's many.
So making subject, good subject to Mr. Brightly's review. Instruction, you know, saying that they have to maintain the existing car.
Excessive access on the side.
Okay.
We're signing it to fit inside the existing walls that are there now, there's two existing wall. We're gonna, if those walls are gonna stay in the same spot, we're gonna remove the stairs and push the stairs up. And put our floodgate in that area there, it will come out into the sidewalk, but it will be flushed when it's done with the sidewalk.
It would be ADA.
Yes, it's, it'll be flushed with the sidewalk, that's it, yeah.
What, there's wing wall.
They're gonna be.
Well, the wing walls are gonna be on this, on the one that's on the corner of Quimby, the one that's the main entrance, let's call it. It's gonna fit inside the existing mall, so it's not gonna change any of that.
Well, what will you show on your plan, not gonna extend the, the existing.
Correct, and just so you can kind of get an idea what we're trying to do, that's why we're taking the existing stairs out. And pushing them forward, so we can accommodate our new floodgate inside those walls, without going into the sidewalk, so anyone.
That, so that's the other corner, one of them, three of the, the side stairs, stair number two. Same thing, right, the walls. Yeah. We have to pass that iron. But it all comes down to the criteria we, we're saying is ADA has to pass it, and I guess we're not concerned about the. You know, right of way stuff, or, or.
Well, it looks like the right of ways stand along the curb.
Okay, as long as you're, uh, there. The way I understand, we definitely, they're staying to the existing footprint, footprint of the stairs. Yeah, and capturing it that way is important. All right. So Steve, you have your. Little preamble that you go through.
Some, some motion for approval is motion to grant site plan waivers, that all conditions, including. We're not limited to, uh, the, uh, item, open items in Mr. Brightly's February twelve, twenty twenty-five report, to the extent it's still applicable. Uh, as well as all outside and inside agency approvals, including, we're not limited to. For, for borough approval for any company, and reviewed by the borough engineer associated therewith. Uh, gray or similar, just gray coloring, and, uh, a note. Confirming based upon the testimony that there would be, uh, no impingement on the handicap, ADA access, the main. Maintaining the route along the sidewalk, subject to your approval, um, to Bradley. Majority passing.
Both new approved, perceived summary, so.
Okay. Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Sasso?
Yeah.
Mr. Simba?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
And Mr. Southern Reno?
Yes.
The motion varies.
Thank you. Thank you for your help this evening.
Okay.
Okay, there are no, there's, uh, there are no pending applications, and there are no. So, yeah, we're, I'll thank you very much.
Let's have a, uh.
Yeah, the motion.
All moves to enter, in fact, it's done.
Do we have a second?
Second, so.
Thank you.